Good evening and welcome to the regular session Board of Selectmen meeting of August 5th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. One moment, please. There we go. It's recorded. Next on the agenda is to approve the warrants for WR25-3. What would the board like to do with that?
Move that we approve the warrant WR25-03.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is to approve the minutes of 6:24, 25, 24, sorry. I can't read my own writing in this case. What would you like to do with those minutes?
I move we accept the minutes from June 25th, 2024. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public session, do we have anybody for public session tonight?
Yes. Lucy DeLeo.
Yes.
325, he's still Road East. I read in the Berry Gazette about the money that you have to, $400 that you have to give the highway department when you're putting in a driveway.
Right.
Well, we were doing construction in 2016. I remember giving Kevin a check, $400. I didn't know I was supposed to get that back. Any money back once we were done. According to the article, I, I thought, well, maybe I should be getting some money back.
Did you have the apron put at the end of your driveway?
Oh, I did.
Okay, so you will be on my list as I go through, I'm going through all the permits that were given out. And we will be taking care of everything that needs to be taken care of.
Okay.
Whether it's a refund necessary or whether it's to have aprons put on the ends of driveways.
Actually Harold has the refund application at the highway garage.
Okay.
Um, that's probably.
Actually, I have it at home.
Oh, you've got it.
Because I've been going through, it's three folders full and I've been going through each of them.
Okay.
To catch up with everybody.
Okay.
But it goes all the way back to 1981.
I saw that.
Yeah, it does. So, yes, but we'll, we're getting there very slowly, but we are getting there. That everybody will be accounted for.
Okay, so an application that you have though.
I have the applications, yes.
I think he's still, Harold will have to sign off on.
Where would I get it?
I should have it at home.
Are you bringing them here to the clerk's office?
I think she's asking if she needs to fill out an application.
An application.
You never filled one out when you were doing your?
When you did your?
When you're doing, you're building in your driveway?
Lucy, there's a form when you pave your driveway.
Right.
You get it from the highway superintendent and that's to get your reimbursement.
But I should have that in the folders because it should be attached. So I should have it.
If you've got the whole folder.
I have the whole folder.
Harold's on vacation this week too.
That's okay, this is found money for me, but I didn't get that.
I'll be checking.
I don't need to do anything, I just wait.
Yes.
Okay.
But I will make sure you get it.
Yes or no?
I'm going to check for you.
Thank you.
And if you don't have a receipt that you've already given it back, you will get it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have anything to present? Any questions? No, then we'll move forward. Next on our agenda for tonight is the Rutland intermunicipal agreement for animal control services. I was going to introduce to you the Rutland Town Administrator, but he hasn't arrived yet. And we have the Rutland Animal Control Officer Jen Freiberg. And we have the OCAM Animal Control Officer Tina Lindsay, present with us tonight. We have heard that the town of Rutland has been increasing its regionalization on animal control services.
Yes, ma'am. So as of right now, I cover seven towns. Rutland, Barry, Paxton, Princeton, New Raintry, Boylston and West Boylston.
All of our, all of our abutting towns.
Yes, Boylston and West Boylston is new as of July, the beginning of July.
Started in July, okay. I knew they were going to start pretty soon.
Yeah, so I mean, I was approached just to come and ask and answer any questions you guys may have. I can give you a general overview of the services that we do offer. As of right now, I work 40 hours a week. My typical hours are Monday through Friday daytime type schedule, but I am available. I'm not, we're not on call, we don't get paid to be on call, but I certainly answer my phone almost 24/7.
Are you the only officer that Rutland has?
As of right now, we are slated to hire somebody else for 24 hours per week.
Just one person?
One person.
I had heard possibly two, so I just.
As of right now, I think it's slated for one. That was with the addition of the previous towns. I don't know if that is going to change if we continue to add. So that may be something that they've addressed if OCAM does decide to join in the agreement, that it may increase those hours and or number of people. Should be nice, but as of right now, I know with the town, the current seven towns I have, I've covered five up until for the last six years, I've covered five of those towns independently. So Boylston and West Boylston are my only new towns right now. With the addition of those, they slated the 24 hour per week slot, which would probably look something like four, six hour shifts, maybe three later in the afternoon, early evening during the week and one six hour weekend type slot. It's been yet to be determined. I'm somewhat flexible on that depending, you know, who wants to, who ends up with the position and what their needs may be while getting the coverage that extends a little bit later in the day and a little bit more on the weekends. As of right now, I, I hate to say I wing it, but that's what we do. So we answer calls from, you know, when we're on vacation, when we're in a different part of the state, whatever it may be. I know a lot of the stuff I do as well as Tina, we can handle over the phone if we can't get there immediately. Sometimes people just, you know, they need that phone calls, know that they're, they have been heard. So that's what we offer right now. Obviously I have a vehicle. We have a small kennel that houses five dogs. It's not anything elaborate or huge, but I've never had it full up to this point, so I don't think the size is going to be a problem with the additions because I've never had an overrun kennel, so.
I was just going to ask you, what happens to the dogs that don't fit into your kennel?
Yeah, we have, I mean, I've never had it happen, knock on wood. But we do have three additional kennels up outside of the police department for emergency use if we need to. I've never again had to do it. I have a kennel run at my house if God forbid I needed to or we had some kind of emergency situation. I don't mind reaching out to other ACOS or other services again if need be. I haven't as of yet had a problem. I've never had even those five runs full, so I'm hoping that it, I'm hoping that it stays out. Most of the things that I do pick up are claimed in a reasonable amount of time. It's very rare, although I do have two right now, but it's very rare that things are not claimed. So, and we don't have an adoption policy, so anything that is not claimed within the timeframe, I don't adopt out from my facility. I funnel through a legit rest, like a shelter type, you know, shelter building.
Any particular one?
Second chance, sometimes there's another facility out in Weston, Mass, like the Franklin County facility. I will reach out to private all breed rescue, you know, private breed rescues, purebred rescues. If you have a purebred dog for whatever reason, I've reached out to Pitbull Rescue for things, I've reached out to Golden Retriever Rescue. We just use whatever resources we have to find the best place that that dog is going to go. And again, luckily that's few and far between, so.
Okay, you just haven't mentioned Worcester, Worcester is close.
Worcester Animal Rescue League is just so inundated at the moment. They have 80 plus dogs as of right now. I know that the only contract, I used to work for Worcester years ago, Worcester Animal Control, I was Worcester Animal Control Officer a number of years ago. And we have a, Worcester had a contract with them. At the time, I think even Shoesbury did and a couple of the other smaller towns, but I know that Shoesbury has reached out to me and Holden has reached out to me about housing some of their dogs on occasion because Worcester has turned them away. So the only contract that Worcester Animal Rescue League has in place right now that they have to take their dogs is for the city of Worcester. And they're just so overloaded the rest of the time. I usually, I don't know, I'm assuming they turn me away as well, but I try not to overtax them if I can go somewhere else because I just know that they're so full. So, and again, like I said, I mean, I, I give my private cell phones to anybody that needs it, not the public, but I mean, all the police departments have it, all the dispatchers have it, that's how they get in touch with me. And I deal with four dispatch centers I think right now, four or five, something like that. So that's how they reach me through my cellphone, which is always on. And again, I'm mostly here to, to answer any questions that you may have. I mean, no way suggesting that Tina doesn't do a great job because I know she does and we've worked.
She does do an excellent job.
We've worked closely on many things and I have no problem reaching out to Tina for help and vice versa, you know, when we need each other. So, you know, this is not, I'm not here to solicit anybody's job is to answer questions, you know, if you're interested in the regionalized service.
Okay, um, evening calls.
Again, we, we, I answer my cell phone nine times out of 10. It's unrealistic to think that one or even two people can be available 24/7, you know, 65 days of the year. It's just not, it's not realistic. We do what we can. I am readily available to take those calls most of the time. If not, I'm always happy to usually talk to an officer through that call or, you know, reach out to that person, let them know that I'm so sorry, can't get this evening, but you know, what can we do to make this comfortable for tonight and I'll, you know, be the first thing in the morning. Again, we do, we do our best. I think all ACOS are in the same boat. We don't have a lot of backup. I mean, Tina and I will back each other up if we have to. And we have other ACOS that will do the same, but.
You would back her up whether or not we're part of the regionalization?
Oh yeah, we do that now. We do mutual aid for each other now. You know, so that's, you know, we're, we're small towns, that's what, you know, what you have to do.
And I agree.
Neither one of us or any ACO can be available 24/7. It's just not a realistic thing. But we all do our best to answer calls at a time we may have. And the emergent ones obviously take a little more precedence, but it's not to say that you're always even in the area. I mean, you know, I have great kids and kids and, you know, I could be in Boston watching a kid's lacrosse game or someplace else. So even if you, it's just not realistic to say that we're always sitting at home waiting for the phone call. But we certainly do our best to get back to people and answer the phone or send a text or try to resolve the situation some other way.
Okay, it sounds very cooperative. Which branch of government in Rutland do you fall under?
Police Department. I work in the police department, yeah, but, yeah, we don't really get those benefits, do we? No, I've fallen to the chief of police.
Okay, you answer to him?
Yes.
For anything, all right. I had seen in one of the flyers that we had gotten that you are not a 24/7 response team. And that's why I had asked about the evening calls that you may get.
Yeah, in order to do that for, you know, any department, you're looking at 12 people if you want to 24/7. You know, you're looking at those shifts and that rotation for any, you know, any department, you know. I mean, but, I mean, like I said, we, we do the best we can. I mean, obviously I answer my phone, my phone is never off. We answer, I answer my phone 24/7 if I'm, if I'm within range and available. I mean, I've sat on the deck of a cruise ship answering phone calls and emails before we left dock. You know, anybody in my profession has.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it's one of those things that.
Helps for a lot of dedication.
And why, no kidding.
I can understand that too, probably, yes, very good. Thank you so much on that. Do you only handle cats and dogs?
No, I handle anything.
Wildlife as well?
Yes, not nuisance wildlife. I handle injured or orphaned wildlife. Nuisance wildlife is in a different category. In order to, it's illegal to trap and relocate in the state of Massachusetts. So anything that's trapped has to be either brought to a rehab or the veterinarian or humanely euthanized. So the state licenses through mass wildlife, what they call pack agents, problem animal control agents. They take a test through mass wildlife that licenses them to trap and humanely euthanize what's considered problem or nuisance animals. The family of woodchucks that you have living under your deck that you just don't want there or things like that. So the only things that I would handle is if it is, I have an appropriate place to bring it. So I don't handle the nuisance things. I handle, I mean, if we know something is sick and possibly rabid, I don't carry it this time for my work. So we typically send a police officer to dispatch said animal if need be. All my departments are great about doing so. So, you know, we have a raccoon that's, we're, you know, very.
You don't save part of the animal to send off to Boston for.
It depends on what, what the encounter is. If an animal is just out in the backyard here and has no contact with people, Boston doesn't want it. There's no reason to test it for rabies. If it's had contact with a domestic animal or a person, or in the case of a bat, if you woke up in the middle of the night and it was flying around your bedroom, then they want it for testing. But if you're talking just a sick animal that's out doing its thing that they're concerned about because of location or just to put it out of its misery and suffering, it's just dispatched and disposed of. It doesn't need to go in for testing, so.
Interesting, okay. If a person just calls to report to you that they have a bear in their house or in their neighborhood.
Their house I'm going to.
Yeah, no, not in the house, right. But are pretty close to the house. Would you take anything there? Because normally a bear would kind of wander off eventually.
I answer those calls as far as I just give people advice. I usually ask if it's carrying a picnic basket. But I realized that when I say that now, none of my dispatchers or police officers, because they're too young, know what I'm talking about. Laugh and I'm like, oh, that's right, you're young and I'm not. I don't say that anymore. But no, I, I worked for mass wildlife for a number of years.
Oh, good.
I can give them decent advice as far as just making sure your bird feeders are in and that includes during the day, you know, banging your paws and pants together if you're concerned. They're not going to bother you unless you get in between them and they're young. And it's, you know, prime time for them to be out.
Or if you take a picture of them from your porch window?
They bother you then?
They might get very, very, very close with their paws.
I'm guessing you're speaking for experience.
Not me. There's somebody else I know it has happened to and I thought, what do you do? Bear is that familiar with?
That's a mass wildlife, that's a mass wildlife for an environmental police issue.
That's what I was wondering, yes.
Has it become so much of a problem that they're becoming aggressive in an area, mass wildlife, the environmental police will be the ones to take action on that.
Okay, I was wondering where they came in and if, when you could call them as well.
I mean, you know, I have good contacts there, so I don't ever mind reaching out to them because like I said, I worked there for a number of years, so I'm very familiar with the furbearer biologists. So, I mean, it's very infrequent, truthfully, that they're going to tranquilize a bear or moves. It'd have to be something that that animal was in extreme danger or really aggressive towards the public. And we don't tend to have that extent typically. But I'm comfortable reaching out and asking them if we do have a continuous problem.
Right. I don't know if you know or not, about 12 years ago, we were approached by Rutland because they were just starting a regional program and asked if we wanted to join with them and it was a lot of controversy in town for quite a while. And then we finally came to a vote and most of it was no, we do not wish to join with the regional forum. And that's when Tina came in for us and she's been doing an excellent job since then. But the reason that most people didn't want to join at that time was finances. We were not in a very good situation at that time. And we were just, or a lot of people were just afraid that the cost of going into a regionalization program is going to raise our fees and more that we're going to have to ask people to give towards our animal control.
Unfortunately, I can't speak for the financial end of it and that's why I think I was hoping Austin was going to be here and I thought he was. I just am not involved in the budgeting or the finance or the planning as far.
That's what I was hoping to see, your budget for the last years.
I don't have that, that's, that's above my pay grade. But they, you know, I, I can't tell you what that looks like projecting forward unfortunately, or in the past. My chief or Austin could get that to you, I'm sure tomorrow, but I can't speak on the, on the financial end of it.
We, we have a possible price for just one year, just this year, would be $7,124. Our program in OCAM is 7,100. So it's very, very close, but in OCAM, our percentage of raising prices is quite low. Whereas in Rutland, I'm not sure what your percentage.
I, you know, again, I wish I could speak to it. I just, I don't know off the top of my head. If I thought Austin was going to be here, I maybe would have gathered that information and brought you some kind of statistics, but I, I, I would be talking out of, out of school if I said it. I wouldn't want to speculate something that I don't really know the answer to.
And that would be something I think.
I know it goes by the population of the county.
Price, but with more people joining, it should come down a bit.
Percentage of population.
Right.
I just don't know how that increases annually or if it does.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't see it.
But if we're starting at, if we're starting at our high end.
Right, you don't want to.
And you're still a little higher than we are.
Of course.
I'd be afraid it would have a tendency to go higher than we're going to go.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that looks like annually and how it increases. Like I said, I do know it goes by the population of town, but I don't know how it increases annually for those towns, so.
Do, does anything charge for the number of calls you make during the year? It doesn't at all. Okay, that sounds good. That sounds very good.
What's our?
Not for the kennel fees or anything like that. That's not, none of that is additional. That's all included in that price that you talked about.
In that price, including the use of the car?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, the vehicle.
Uniforms.
There's some talk about getting a second vehicle with that second person. Try to talk chief into giving me his, but. So, you know, but that's, that's the kennel fees, that's, you know, if a dog is not claimed, that's what I figure out what to do with that dog. That's any veterinarian fees, that's any rabies testing fees, that's, everything is encompassed in that amount.
Okay, so I, we don't have to think about extras. All of a sudden something comes, we need this for ads on.
Equipment's included, although, you know, all of that is contributed by Rutland.
Are you going out advertising for another officer?
They, it's been posted, we've accepted several, we probably have over a dozen resumes, but we have not started the interview process as of yet.
But you haven't hired anybody yet? Okay, that's.
How many calls have we had here today, calendar year in OCAM?
It becomes a blur.
Fred, they just turned in their annual town reports.
I was gonna say maybe a half a dozen. What?
No, that look.
I'd get them a half a dozen.
Just in OCAM.
Yeah.
Because I've been on two at least myself.
Did that include the horse?
Yeah, cow.
Cow.
Yeah, she liked me.
Okay, that's not too many.
So we don't really have an accurate number?
No, I, I would, yeah, I'd have to research that.
Is it in our annual town?
No, I was just curious.
From January till now? I doubt it. You would get to the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah. About last fiscal year.
Yeah, that should be in there.
Okay, I'll check on it then.
You.
Would also be able to pull that.
Submit your amount of calls in your fiscal report.
We would also be able to get.
It should be in there then, yes, we can check on that.
We can also get a copy of the reports to Rutland Dispatch for, as to date from January 1st.
All the calls go through dispatch?
Correct, most.
Most calls go.
Unfortunately, some people have been giving out my personal cellphone.
Yeah, that's. I mean, and it is that, you get, you get calls through your personal cellphone, you get texts through your personal.
I can understand that.
Calls on Facebook, you get calls in your emails, you get calls on Facebook Messenger, you get tagged in posts from various towns and end up handling things that way. So there are always the handful that are unaccounted for. And we try to tell people, you know, please call dispatch just so this gets logged and reported, but oftentimes we handle it and it never really goes that route. Because we just take calls in so many different manners.
And when you answer.
The mayday dispatch sends to you, you call the people, then the people have a friend and then.
It just gets bypassed. I'm, I'm tagged in posts on Facebook daily for different, for all the different towns, you know. And it's my personal Facebook that they tag, not my Rutland Animal Control page. So things just come in from such various sources that it's hard to really.
It is, I can, I can understand that for sure then. Okay, anybody else have questions for them?
I just want to say, reading this, any fines that she would issue if she had to.
Comes back to the town.
Back to the town, doesn't go into the district.
That's crazy.
I think, I think that would go to the. I think it would go to, I'm not sure, but that again, that would be, that would be an awesome.
Your contract that comes here.
I, okay, so it comes, they come here.
Is that a final finalized contract?
Both pages.
Pages, okay.
Like a solocation?
Yes.
Okay, good. Do you have any other questions, Michael?
No.
Susan?
If you go, Susan Turnbull, New Raintry Road, if you go this route, what happens to Tina's position?
We've asked that several times. No, no specific answer yet on that.
Paul Ross Shaw from Gap and Road, I just want to say over the years, Tina Lindsay has handled enough very difficult cases. She's treated everybody very fairly. Made sure the animals were treated properly. And she was very firm in what she required after these complaints. So as a resident, I, I would be disappointed unless she had a reason for leaving town and, and not, you know, staying in their position. I, I think she's a wonderful animal control officer. I don't think there's any deficiencies that this woman has as far as this position. I think she's done a great job for OCAM, so I would like to go on record stating, I hope that's kept, you know, within context if you're going to try and make a change because I think she's done a wonderful job for this town.
I agree, full heartedly.
Yeah, me too.
I have, I haven't heard of any complaints about it at all for all these years.
And that's why the thing I want to state that I'm not, I'm not here to steal.
That was going to be my next question.
They were very well together, you know, the way we, I mean.
So even if we didn't join, we would still have some coverage?
I mean, we're available for each other for mutual aid if we're available. I mean, obviously it's, it's, it's a little more minimal. We're not covering your town.
Right.
If there's an emergency and Tina's not available, it's just like if I'm not, she'll, you know, she's gone to calls for me. It's, it's, you know, it's what we did.
Those calls.
Huh?
And so I've gone to those calls.
Yes, you have. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The other thing that I mentioned, the 24 hour, I mean, the other thing that she, you know, she could certainly apply for the 24 hour position and be considered that as well. Covering eight towns.
Their concern is what happens if I'm working in Rutland and OCAM gets a call.
Now?
If I, if I was to take the position or if I was offered the position in OCAM.
And they did not join.
And they did not join. Their concern is what would they get?
Pretty much.
Um, financially, you can't double dip. So obviously she couldn't get, she couldn't get beyond getting paid for Rutland and doing an OCAM call. That said, we're flexible enough that you want to take an hour to go do the OCAM call and make the hour up at the end of your shift.
I think more of the point of Tina hires on in Rutland, are you leaving OCAM?
I said I was leaving OCAM.
I, I know. That's where we're sitting here.
That's the unknown factor in all of this right now, that and finances.
Because I'm okay with the status quo as it is right now. I think it's working, working very well.
I can't speak for you. I don't know if she's leaving, I don't know. Can I tell you I'm trying to steal her maybe, but I can't, no.
But we gathered that. That was pretty obvious.
Well, we work well together and that's not always, it's.
Yeah, no, that's.
You know, it's, it's a field that.
But it would also be mutual aid.
Yeah, again, as long as it's not a double dipping thing when she's, if she's, you know, she can't be on the clock for OCAM, I mean, for Rutland and.
That's kind of why I asked how many calls, say in the last seven months, so if it's minimal.
You're less concerned.
I don't think we're inundated with.
With the animal control, there's no set times.
Right.
I mean, you have busier times than others. Fourth of July, forget.
Yep.
Spring, straight out, forget.
Yep.
And in the fall.
Calls.
And God forbid we have another COVID thing because I was busier during COVID than any other time in my career.
But, but it's all unpredictable.
But it's also, you know, I could be working in Rutland, I get a call over here, I pick up the phone going, like she said, I can get to you in a couple hours.
When I'm off to.
If, if that's not.
Well, the other question too would be if you're employed by Rutland, but you're not on duty and you get called out for OCAM, that wouldn't be an issue, right?
If it was a regular time off?
No.
Why would that be an issue?
Well, sometimes, you know, people get hired to places, they sign contracts and it forbids them from employing another jurisdiction.
Well, the other side of it is seven towns with roughly 38,000 people.
A lot of square miles, that's, that's, I mean, we're covering almost 200.
Calls come in at the same time. OCAM could be on the back burner depending on.
What, what, I mean, we, you know, I.
So that's the other side.
Anything else there, you know, we put them in the order of emergency, you know, priority. We have a dog hit by Karen Boylston versus complaining about my neighbor's dog in New Raintry because it went to the bathroom in my yard, we're going that route first. It's just a matter of prioritizing appropriately.
Yeah.
And again, a lot of times people are just very comfortable with that phone call. People would want to be heard and know that you're on it, that they're not being ignored, that you've gotten their complaint, that, you know, you're on top of it. You know, I got your complaint, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry that your neighbor's dog is barking, I'll, I'll get there tomorrow morning to speak to them about this and rectify this for you. You know, people are pretty reasonable as long as they know that you're going to take action, other than the emergent calls.
And if it was more of a I need you now situation, it's a, calls have always been handled. I don't think there's one call that I didn't answer or have handled if I wasn't available. Whether it be Jen or Tracy or it's it's done.
Yeah, he took care of the cow call after I vacated the scene, right? We'll get on there, follow up with them.
I did.
What was the issue? Did the cow jump over the fence there and?
Pushed the fence down. They are putting four strands of electric fence out in the pasture for the big goats and the cows. And I have been offered to give them a hand if they needed it. Because sooner the later would be better because the sheep get paid money.
Yeah, well, they owe me for dry cleaning.
Do you have any other questions or comments or anything for them, Dawn? No, I've asked all the questions I think I could think of to ask. You get your questions answered?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate the discussion that we had tonight with you. And we'll continue to discuss.
Absolutely. And if you need anything, you can certainly reach out to Austin and see what he can get you the financials.
And I have a question for you.
For me?
Yes. If they were to join Rutland or region, what about animal inspector?
Um, I, for all of my other towns, I'm not the primary. I swear in as an assistant animal inspector. I do so that I can issue quarantines and strict confinements. I do not do the barn inspections, with the exception of this one year for West Boylston. Because when they it was a stipulation just for this year, because they didn't think they would have anybody though coming on. But truthfully, by myself, I can't get I can't handle my regular calls and do seven towns worth of barn inspections. So we have all my other towns have a primary animal inspector that does all the barn inspections. Um, and then again, I've I've signed on as an assistant so I can issue the quarantines and the strict confinement. Um, the stipend that towns have for their animal inspectors, I waive on my part. I send that also to the primary because it's such little money for what they do to begin with that I don't need to take a cut of that. So I typically stay away from the barn inspections if able. I do do all the kennel inspections, all the quarantines, all the strict confinements.
But Tina, you're doing that now.
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Part of the job. So that would have to be a secondary job for Oakham if you were to draw.
Yeah, it's a it's a it's a separate stipend typically. I mean, I know Rutland's is negligible, it's like five hundred dollars a year. I used to split it between myself and the primary, and I said, this is just silly. I just give them my two fifty. Um, because he does do all the barn inspections. So but I do handle the other things, which is why I have to be sworn in as an assistant for all the towns, because I think it's for me to go on an animal bike and then come back and give the information to Tina. So she goes on the same bike to issue the quarantine, and then I could have issued while I was standing at the bike. So I don't like to make any redundant work. So we, you know, that's why I have to be an assistant.
Okay. That's something else to think about, too, is the animal inspector. But you do have an assistant, though, if I'm not mistaken.
She doesn't get paid.
But she would have to take over. Yeah, she would have to take your position then, right? As inspector.
Highly that she would.
Okay, that that'd be something else for just to talk about and think.
I don't know what the barns want the quantity of barns are in Oakham, but I imagine you do quite a bit of barn inspections. Um, so again, it's just not something that covering all the complaints for all the, I mean, even with five towns, doing five towns of barn inspections within a certain timeframe every year, just.
Right. We don't have as many barns as we used to have, though. We're losing them quickly, like it said, unfortunately.
Meaning anybody with chickens you're supposed to stop in here.
Oh, I know. I understand that, yes.
Definitely a lot of horses.
Yes.
You know, Kim.
Taste them sheep.
Yeah.
And sheep goats, anything like that. I mean, it doesn't have to be twenty acres. It can be the three with a couple goats on it supposedly. I mean, I don't think we truly get applications or they apply for, you know, kill inspection, I mean, for barn inspections for them. And if we're not aware of them, a lot of them are sure going to the radar, but.
Okay, very good. All right, we have no further questions. Chief, do you have any questions or evidence for us? I think we I think we hit every piece of it as far.
My my concern was, you know, would she still be able to work here if she actually went through their employee, go with the regionalization? And the concern is that contractually, like I said, a lot of jurisdictions won't allow you to work for another jurisdiction while.
Right.
I don't believe we have like any type of no compete clause. I don't know. Um, I know, like, if I was going to, at one point in time, I was looking into working part time for dispatch. Um, and my chief said that would be something that I did have to approach him to get approval for any part time. It's it's written somewhere that I have to get approval for any part time job that I was gonna pick up working for the municipality, whether it was within that municipality for another one or by attending down the road. Um, I'm supposed to to discuss.
Forty hours. Because you're forty hours, you're right time.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I I don't know how it works. Yeah, I don't know how it works for the twenty four hour position. I don't. If it's any, I don't know if it's an issue at all or.
I think it's a issue.
Okay, thank you so much for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Say hello to Austin, please. She she were here.
Obviously, if anything, just please reach out to give you the financial information.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
I'll see you there.
I know it says a possible vote for tonight, but I really think we need to go over everything that they have said.
I I don't want.
And wait for the findings.
I talked to Austin.
Well, that's I'm thinking too.
Yeah, the other side of that is if we have to come up with a large animal barn inspector type. That's going to be an added budgetary item going forward. That's already included right down here in Oakham. Correct?
The animal inspectors, that included in the cost of our animal control?
Correct.
She said she's doing it.
Oh, I know she said she's doing it. I thought it added.
Annual budget.
All part of that seven thousand.
Yep.
Okay.
So that would be going forward would be a new budget item, a new a new person anyways.
Yes, it would.
So right there, your savings is kind of.
Diminishing.
Yeah. Because we don't know what that number would be.
Right, we we don't.
Or if we.
Or we could get somebody that could do it as well as she does. Yeah, I agree. I agree.
What are we paying her?
Or animal control?
No, no, we're inspecting bonds. What do we pay her?
I have no idea. Perfectly done. It's it's part of the seven one hundred of the year.
In the budget.
So she gets a stipend and does both jobs?
Correct.
We didn't break that out?
Never been that way.
So that's that seventy one hundred. It all comes down there.
So seventy one hundred includes her stipend and all operating expenses.
Mileage.
Mileage, yeah, all that.
We have a kennel?
No.
What do we do with animals?
Uh, second chance, same options that Jen had.
We did away with the kennel up at Salt Shit, right?
Yeah, that was.
Yeah. Yeah, that didn't last too too long, didn't it?
Well, I was there a while, but it was, uh, I mean, it.
Well, it wasn't.
Nobody cleaned it.
First of all, the new law took effect and that took that right out.
That's true.
Yeah, you're right.
That's true that we couldn't do it, yeah.
And when we applied for the Community Compact Grant for the Rutland thing, we have a building that has water, sewer, power, everything to that building.
Right.
And we have kennels outside, inside, and backup kennels at the station. That was mainly for the police dog.
Does that have radiant heat?
Yes.
That's okay. That may be one of the.
That was all covered by Community Compact Grant to get it going.
Right, yeah, I remember that.
So they they got a lot of resources there.
Yeah. Yeah, right now, if we pick up an animal, we have to a dog, we have to bring it to one of the.
And she has to use their own car, and we pay her mileage.
Yeah.
Which is a tremendous liability.
Yeah, that's true.
We just, I know.
We may have an extra police car we could use.
Possibly.
Okay, then we'll hold this table this for now and discuss it again.
Yeah.
At our next meeting, the nineteenth, okay? Agenda for the nineteenth, please. Good. All right, thank you. Um, refund policy for the Board of Health. We have Sue Colette here to represent the Board of Health. Hi, Sue.
Can you walk us through what happened?
Well, so they sent in the check, they sent in the permits.
Yeah, I've read all of those.
And I replied, I started the process, sent it over to Lester, required more paperwork. They sent everything in. Lester started doing their thing, and then they they found out that they didn't really need it and withdrew it. So they were being less than nice about saying they wanted a refund when I'm always hesitant to give a refund when we've done the work. But I don't, we didn't know if the town had a policy that we are supposed to refund them. We haven't done anything yet because we.
And this is for how much?
Seventy five dollars, not like, you know, not like what I appear for. Huge amount.
Since you've been here, is that the first time?
Yeah. I don't think we've had, from what I've gathered, I don't think anyone's ever asked for a refund. So I don't know if it's any other departments that do has permits. I mean, I've never seen it when I worked on the fire department for all those years. We didn't have any refunds. So I don't, I didn't know, we didn't know if the town had an official policy.
Did they get the permit in in time for what it is they wanted to do or?
They, I think the it's a was a food permit, but I think they didn't need it for whatever. It's Kona ice or something. So I think they figured out they didn't need it, and Lester figured out, agreed with them, and they did, they just withdrew everything. They didn't need it because they weren't doing anything in town.
So it was never, it was never issued?
Never issued.
That's the email chain. So if you go further back, the last pages. Yeah, but I was going to read it from the side. The request was made, and it was to clarify my request from July tenth. Since I'm unable to attend your meeting, the Board of Health wasn't seeking permission or decision from you on whether we should consider the refund. I was asking if we could please have legal counsel review or ultimately if there was townwide policy for determining what the boards and departments should do for the case of refunds. This can't be a Board of Health specific issue. It's a basic principal finance management policy question. What does our municipal financial management policy say on this topic? So the request was to go to town council and see what town council thinks on refunding the seventy five dollars. Is that the step we're going to take, that we're willing to take?
I don't know if it's a town council issue. I think it's a does does the town itself have a return policy?
Well, the driveway permits, we refund the driveway permits when they you know, when they, when the homeowner paves their apron to their driveway, they get, you know, they fill out the refund application and it goes through and they get their four hundred dollars back.
But what about a withdrawal of a permit?
They asked for a permit. We went through all the work with Lester to get this permit done. So we expended manpower. And then just because they decided they didn't need it, they should have.
Oh, here it is. But it seems the issue was they they never came and got the permit.
They was not, no, they weren't issued a permit because they withdrew everything before the permit was issued.
I think in the email chain, it said something that Lester was only available at certain times. Like, there was a lot of back and forth in the chain that that Aaron sent over.
I think we were just looking.
Yeah, but they still.
Bottom line is they said they didn't need the permit.
Yeah.
We already expended manpower to go through the process.
So I think we were just looking for guidance. If we should, and again, I I mean, I I guess I have to talk to Wendy about even issue a refund, right?
So Dawn, you're kind of the mindset that we're not obligated to.
No.
Which is kind of where I'm at.
No.
Versus going spending hundreds and hundreds of dollars with town council.
If they had applied and nothing had started, then I could say, yeah, no, we haven't done anything.
Yeah.
But we did our job.
Or we didn't issue the permit in time for the event.
Right, right, it's a, yeah.
Because the other side of that is if you go through the process and oh, you know what, it's raining on the day of the event, we want to cancel, we want our money back.
Exactly.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah.
There's another part to the email and earlier section. It says, certainly back to see if we have a town policy or legal was advised for the Board of Health. The applicant withdrew their application after we had begun the process and had multiple communications with instructions. Fine Acres Reports, they told the party that they should apply for per, probably should have applied for permits last year. They waited until a week and a half beforehand. Our regional agent was able to get this done, but the applicant did not respond with the documents needed. He didn't follow through with what he was supposed to follow through, and then he just decided not to go forward.
No, that's just I got out of reading all that. Yeah.
There's a lot of information from Lester as well. What would the board like to do about it? Refund or not?
No.
No?
No, the Board of Health should just send them a letter saying, we started the process and you they can go through the the text of these and write them a nice letter saying, hey, this is this, that is that. Process was started. That's what the fee's about.
And obviously paperwork was done for it. And then the ones more of what they needed, they just never brought in.
They wanted us to rush.
That's what I was getting from this, is they wanted it done immediately.
It seemed like Lester was willing, but they just couldn't.
Yeah.
It wasn't fast enough or at their convenience.
Yeah.
It will.
I definitely don't think town council or it's looking at this.
No. Like three times the amount the council would give us the answer.
Exactly, for the seventy five dollars.
That'll just be for the fifteen minute phone call. Never mind reading.
That's true. That's true. Okay, so, um, our decision is no.
You're okay with it?
Yeah, so you're okay if we, I mean, I'll write a letter, have Aaron look at it, sign it. We can send it out to them.
Yeah, sure. Just close that issue.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to do, but I wanted to make sure that you guys were okay.
No, I understand that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sue.
Community Compact IT Grant.
Website. I think you had asked me to put this on the agenda just for the website and as to how we're going to proceed.
Oh, using, uh, your capital.
Yes. Yes. So it was under there, the project or how.
They wrote, they wrote that grant, yeah.
Yes, they, yes, for sure. Assisted with the twenty five thousand dollar grant that was granted or awarded to Oakham for the, you know, revaluation of the website or going with the new.
Right.
Yeah.
Vendor for that matter.
Getting process and.
Yeah, so I think that enough time has gone by from when we had started and ran into all these hiccups for procurement processes that we can start a fresh slate, even contacting the same three or looking to others to say, okay, this is exactly what we're looking for. And now that we know that some of them might not have state contract bids, but they might have a third party, which is totally fine. That just needs to be known right up front. We can't award something to a company and then they say, oh, by the way, do it through the this third party. It doesn't work like that. It has to be all laid out right from the beginning. Yeah.
So we could use opera money to cover them to.
I mean, if the board would like to see Capital Strategies be the project manager to do the procurement on this or.
Be long. Be long.
It won't be long or we can just start fresh. But again, it's just another project on the plate because we have that other. Um, big one too with the fiber grants.
Yes.
At the same time, so it's kind of. They're weighing heavy. Because regardless of them doing the procurement process, it would then just have to be. Someone we would internally still have to. Manage or work along the side with them.
Getting it going.
In regards to the fiber optic ones, I think that that I have a good hand on that one just because it was right from the beginning known as a third party. So if we get a state contract, you know, their bid or their third party contract, it should be relatively easy.
Okay.
Um. So I think that maybe, you know, Capital Strategic could, but you know, I guess it would just have to be how much. Would it cost?
Exactly.
Because if it's. A lot, lot, I think maybe we can get away with. But I don't think.
I don't think it's going to be a lot.
They've been very reasonable with us.
It would be worth exploring, but just knowing that just exploring isn't an option. It's a financial. You know, cost, just asking them to research it and even if you choose not to go forward with that.
Yeah.
Right.
I would say, yeah, reach out and ask them. Kill it to Hapa.
Okay. That would sounds fine.
Yeah.
I think that's probably the way to go.
So I'll just get some information, some numbers and then put it in the next meeting or when I, when I get them. To make a, a final decision. Regardless of whether, which way the board wants to go, the financial cost of reaching out. Will be covered by ARPA, even at that, at the minimum.
Okay. Now, um, unencumbered balance was what sixty-four you said?
Yes, as of right now, sixty-four, yep. And that's um. Yeah, that's in.
So using this would be a new withdrawal.
Yeah, yes. The sixty-four is deducted anything that's still pending, anything that's been voted on, so.
Right.
That's.
Yeah. Good.
It's moving.
Yeah, it is.
And everything has to be. As I know you guys know, but um. Um, encumbered with a final contract, no later than December thirty-first of this year.
Say every.
Yeah, we have to figure.
It's moving quickly.
Mm-hmm.
It will be. I always thought. To me, Christmas is almost here.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to think of everything else in between. It's, oh my word, but it's coming. Okay, everybody is all set on Community Compact then. Go forward that. Vadar software is what we've talked a lot about at the last session. Is through whether or not we wanted to go to that software between the accountant. The assessors and the treasurer. So that their equipment could all talk to each other.
And I know that Lori said she would provide some um sample reports and because they were a lot, I just printed one. To go around. Um, I don't know if it makes a whole lot of sense to us, but I think that. From the accountant's perspective and even the treasurer, and I know that I've spoken to the firm, the girl that's in that assessor's office and she's. Said the same thing. Vadar, they all talk to each other. They've worked with this in other towns. It just makes sense. It leaves less room for error.
Yeah.
When people are typing in the same numbers over and over, someone can have a typo on one end and. It just makes sense.
Yeah. So we'd have to get three.
Yes, we would still have to get three quotes or go through a third party that would have a state bid, which. Um, Lori is very familiar with this process in regards to the three bids or. Um, could assist in the, you know, making sure that we're all in compliance as well.
Data or state contract?
No, but they have, there's others, a third party.
Okay.
Most of these ITs are, it's not them directly to have the state contract bid. It's a third party. So that third party might charge a little extra because that's where they make a little bit of their money, but it's sometimes worth if you don't want to go through the full. Or if you're set with one particular um vendor or product that you would like. So it's just something worth exploring or.
I think what she was talking to us the other day. This is going to be yearly. It's going to be like four thousand dollars cheaper.
Yeah, so she said it's about fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
The first three years each year. But from there, it drops significantly, especially because OCAM is so small and doesn't have. All these other, you know, sewer and water and all these things on the collector's side.
Right.
That would make it a, a lot. Cheaper than some of the bigger towns or cities.
It's just a shame we didn't do it sooner.
And this, and the board, you know, again, reiterating what she said, has to have a commitment, she said, probably by. End of this year, December, because they need that six month period. Um. So this would be if the board would like to proceed effective for fiscal twenty-six. So next June. Or July first rather.
We need a vote.
Um, yeah, I would think that ideally a vote would be good if you guys would want to um proceed with. Vadar or if there, is there anything else that you want to see?
Vote.
Concrete, get some information, maybe a breakdown of exactly the numbers. From Vadar, maybe start the process of contacting them, giving others like a contractor.
What I was going to say is. If we could just vote tonight to give the accountant the authorization to go. Overhead with this, so we get all the numbers.
Yeah.
See everything.
Because the accountant is, you know, at the end of the day, by law, the um. Person or that has the right to pick the financial software, so.
How many towns and cities did Lori say?
That happened last time. Bush, there was a lot of them that had them.
Around three hundred.
Yeah.
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 And there were only four using what we're using.
Two.
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 Two, okay. Where did I come up with four?
I don't know. You're giving away work, too much credit. And we were the first.
The first.
Or did Mendin come in after?
Mendin is number two and Lori does both of them. Their firm is the accountant, so no other accountant would be exposed. From Massachusetts anyways, to this software.
Yeah, so if Lori could. Do a request for proposal from. Later.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So if you guys want to vote on that to move forward.
So it would be to instruct her to.
Start the process.
Start the process, make the introductions.
Financials.
Yeah.
Would somebody like to make it in the form of a motion?
All right, um. I move that we instruct the town accountant. To move forward with the discussion on Vadar. Vader software. Um, for request proposals and to get back to the board. Um, with that information.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I think it's going to make all three of our officers happy to go to the same. Software.
That'll work, the assessors too.
Mm-hmm.
Assessors, yeah. And, and us reading these stupid things.
Yes, it's much, like she said, it's much simpler, easier.
The Springbrook was difficult for everybody to handle. And it couldn't even make it into the tax collectors.
No, never mind the assessors.
This will make it so much easier for everybody.
Now, keep in mind, obviously, it will be. Like any, any conversion, I'm sure you guys have been exposed to all that. It'll take a little ti- extra time for. Those certain departments, not necessarily hard, but you know, here and there maybe just a little extra. Work added, but should be fairly easy, she said.
So I'm, I'm assuming that'll sync with the Harpers and the. From the sounds of it from last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There may be a break in period, but it will not be anything.
Right.
It's.
Yeah, nowhere near.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As terrible as it was with Springbrook. Everybody will be satisfied with that.
When Spring Brooks calls me next month again asking if I want to uh give good reference to.
No. Other towns.
Absolutely not.
I always say, I'm not the accountant. I don't have that. I say, sorry, no.
Yes.
Okay, we have in the next agenda, oh, next line, Colonial Life.
So Colonial Life is just a, a company that offers additional supplemental benefits. Um, they've stopped by several times or a few times, I should say, uh, just providing what they can do. What?
Is this the same as Affleck?
Similar.
Similar.
Similar concept, yep. Um, it doesn't cost the town anything. It would be, you know, up to an employee if they wanted. Any of their products or services to contribute to that. It would be set up with the treasurer and then it's the automatic deduction. All they're looking for if is for authorization from the board to be able to. Create in their data. An account for OCAM just to pluck in and authorization to speak to the employees. So therefore, if they wanted to join. You know, they would have our name in the system. But other than that, I mean, from the information that I've gathered and they provided, it's. No cost.
Are they going to go around to each individual employee?
They would try to do kind of like Affleck coordinate, you know, several people. I know that the question is, you know, do people come in while they're working? Everybody works different hours. Do they come in on their time off? And now is that going to be an additional? Work expense? Yes.
We're not telling them like.
Right, so if they want to come in, they can come in on their time. This is when it's going to be opened. Not, it's not a mandatory thing.
Right.
Mandatory, they get paid. If it's not mandatory, this is.
I'm not mistaken, last time we only had one person show up.
That is correct.
And they, well, and they requested that we needed to have two or three.
So with Affleck, they needed three people to be, to enroll to one of their.
Right.
Supplemental uh benefits. Um, but we only had one person interested in something, in a product. But they did go and meet with the fire department on their own, like they, he coordinated with. The chief of there, the same thing with the police, because they all work different schedules. I know with the police, we were all upset because they. They brought them pizza. I was like, why didn't you bring me pizza when you came here? Um, so they will do something similar to that if, if, if allowed. Um, to try to make it worth where they can get the most people, but it's only for. And, you know, hired employees.
Hired employees.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good idea considering we don't provide. Health insurance. I mean, uh. Life.
Life insurance, so life insurance is in there, accidental, you know, death. Um, there's a whole bunch of different things in there.
Right, yeah, accidental insurance.
Well, we do, we do provide on the fire department side, don't we?
Life.
Yeah, accidental.
On the state law that.
We, we have that coverage.
Have that.
We have.
I know we did a policy thirty years ago.
Yeah, we have that coverage.
Yeah, we have.
In case somebody got hit at a traffic accident, got picked off by a car or whatever, you know.
Is it that bad?
You're required to have on the state law.
Yeah.
That's not anything we decided to do.
After.
Well, actually it was, we did it long before.
With the law now, you don't have that choice.
No, no, I know what I'm saying. We did it long before that.
You're right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
But does that?
But that's not term life.
Does that cover?
Insurance.
Highway and police also. Or is it still strictly fire?
No, we have the law enforcement, which is, isn't it for police and fire?
Yeah.
Being, you know, public safety.
Right.
Highway is not on that. They're under workers comp.
Mm-hmm.
But for accidental death.
They would want this.
Yeah, they should be covered for.
And this also covers term life and whole life.
And I made it very clear and, you know, in case no one wanted to join, it would.
It's to their benefit.
Yep. So the town's paying police and fire right now.
My general liability.
But not highway.
Accidentally, yeah.
No highway, no.
So we should.
Not highway. Other than workers comp.
Right, but if somebody's. God forbid. You know, loses a leg or.
Nothing.
Yeah, that's not.
So if the board wants to proceed, they, we would have to fill out a form, which would require our tax, the town's tax ID number. It's standard. It doesn't do anything. It doesn't, you know, even if no one, it's just to create the account. Um, so.
Should we have several more? Will they have a choice? Other than just this one?
Well, they had Affleck.
Oh, several more, um.
Insurance companies.
Yeah, so.
So do Life, MetLife, and you can go down the list of. That offer all the same things.
Boston Mutual.
I, I know.
Yeah.
But I didn't get very far past that. But I, I mean, I'll reach out again. Do you want to vote on this to proceed or wait until we have a couple more to make it all, you know?
It's not all going to come in the same day, so.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. I don't know. I just think that. Yeah.
This, we, I haven't looked at that. Did, did that say how much money they got in the bank?
I don't think there was any finances in that.
You know, you know what I mean by that?
Yeah.
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 No. I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, I'll be more than happy if one of the board members wants to sit in, have them come back out and maybe, you know, be a.
No, I, I guess my point is I've never, I've never heard of them. I don't know how big they are. I don't know what their assets are. I don't.
I don't either.
So if, you know, a claim ever came in. Well, we're, we're, we're in the Bahamas, sorry. Type of deal.
Yeah. I can certainly invite them to a, a, a meeting or i- if that's something that you guys would rather, you know, ask these questions or look into other. Um. Companies that offer.
I don't think the full board needs to.
Yeah, I think that maybe one board member who might have some questions.
Ask questions, take notes.
Any board member?
Mike has the questions.
I just asked how much money they had. Nothing worse than paying, hanging in and then going, oh, hey, we went out of business.
That's, no, that's great. See those things, yeah. All right, well, I, I, they're going to call me this week anyways to touch base to see what the board said, so I can kind of go from there. Maybe I can. I'll let you know, you can read through it and. Put it on the future agenda. You know?
Is this like, this isn't like part of that colonial pen life with the. Alex Trebek and Ed McMahon.
Alex can't do it.
No, either can Ed McMahon, but.
Yep.
One of them, they used to hawk one of those.
Just municipal, that package?
Yes.
Oh, it is.
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll let you know when they're coming or a call and kind of ask some.
Yeah.
You know, other questions that you might have after you look at it and. Put it on the next agenda for you guys to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, I'll set on the insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Any new business? No, nothing. Nothing. Hmm. Old business, spectrum broadband agreement.
Guess Maribel's gotten a couple of. Evasive. On metal replies.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct. So after the board instructed me to reach out to them and invite them to a. Upcoming meeting, which I did, gave them all the dates for August, September. I got the response that uh, they don't really want to talk financials at a public meeting, that they can't. And would want to meet with, just with the chair.
No.
And Lucy said to me.
That's not proper.
No, we're not doing that. Um, so therefore I responded pretty much saying that, that. The board can't make any decisions as a one person. Um, so it needed to be. In a meeting and then she said, well, maybe I can talk to you so you can explain it. I said, no, no.
Well, maybe we can talk to them and say, hook those two houses up and you'll get your ninety-six thousand dollars. Otherwise, you're not getting it.
So that's where I was just going to go with. We should probably get ahold of Jared. I think he would be our person. He did the original contract, Jared.
No. No, we had another attorney involved at that because I was their next member. Um, I'd have to go back and look.
I think we should have town council, send them a letter saying that they are in violation of the contract. And. They have thirty days to respond. Um. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and we will not make further payments until such time as they complete, complete the project.
Yep.
Well, that's the agreement they have.
It is.
What's the deadline, the end date, do they have an end date or is just until completed, for the project to be completed?
There was a, there was a date.
I can't, I, I'm pretty sure there is, I, I know there is.
I wanna say it was one year, but. Yeah, don't quote me. Yeah. But they've already made decisions that they never relate to us. No. And that's why there's electric light poles sitting on the side of the road, up on the road.
Yeah, I'll have to look to see when they, you know, what's the date for the project to be completed.
Yeah, so I think I'll make a motion that we contact town council, have them send them the appropriate letter, reminding them that they are now in violation of the agreement of the contract. That motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think we really want so much of an explanation from them, we just wanna tell them that.
Just want it done.
Work, do the work, you're, that's.
So you want to keep to the original
Yeah.
Agreement.
Okay.
Don't think for one second that we wanted something changed, we'd say the same thing.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Any other old business? No, all right, uh, correspondence? I've received three emails. Hello, Board of Selectmen. If you don't want to, I'm sorry, not sure what it means to me at eighty-two South Road. Never had an apron on the driveway installed by owner or by town at any time during paving. Most other homes have one, should I have had one? Would like to have one, but would never pay another four hundred dollars, please let me know about our situation, thank you, Jack Meteville. And we have to look that one up from hit the previous owner of his house, Mr. Lanning.
I had messaged Jack. And he said the house was built nineteen ninety and the original owner was Lanning, Elaine is lying. So I'm assuming there probably was a permit for that.
I will check.
But that road was part of that, uh, that strap money, they did New Braintree Road. And I, I went down South Road yesterday and all the aprons are paved except for that one. Now, who, whether the town paved them or the homeowners did, but they're all down. So, what happened there, I don't know, um. But if there is a an application sitting in the, in the pile, and there's money in the in the fund, that should have been done. Unless they, unless there isn't one, we don't. Gonna have to, but that's the name and that's the date from, uh, Jack Meteville, of the previous owner, so we'll have to move on from there to see if it matches up with anything.
Yes, I haven't seen too many on the applications with, you know, if they were done or not, that any were done by the town. So they forfeited their four hundred dollars, I haven't seen very many of that, not very much of that.
So conceivably, that meant a lot of them had been done. And the money was forfeited, but it's still sitting in that account.
Most of the ones I saw from the eighties were paid.
Yeah.
And they were paged and everything, they were, that's easier than doing later to the nineties and two thousand. I will check on Jack's, and I will check on Judge Delia's as well.
Yeah, hers should be pretty straightforward, that's a brand new house.
It's not that far away.
That should just be.
I can take care of that one too. I'll bring it back to the board so we can vote on it, sure. Um, I also have a letter to Chief Garing that was sent to us. I'm writing to formally resign from my position as part-time patrol officer with the Ocam Police Department effective July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and although my time with the Ocam Police Department has been brief, I have appreciated the opportunity to serve the community and work alongside a team of dedicated professionals. This decision has been a difficult one, but I leave it, I believe it is in the best course of action for my personal, professional growth. Unfortunately, due to personal issues, I have come to the difficult decision that I must step down from my position. I want to extend my gratitude to you and the entire top department for the support and guidance during my tenure. It has been an honor to be part of an organization so committed to making a positive impact in our community. During my remaining time here, I am committed to ensuring a smooth transition of my responsibilities. Please let me know how I can assist in this process, thank you again for the opportunity to serve with the Ocam Police Department. I wish the department continued success and safety in all of its future endeavors. And that is signed by Officer Fernando Montalban.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this morning we received this notice. After nine years of elected public health service to Ocam, it is with great regret that I will be resigning from my position on the Board of Health effective at the end of the day, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Due to personal volunteer commitments with Scouting America, Boy Scouts of America, on a national level, which have recently taken on a much larger scope and responsibility, I cannot continue to adequately serve the people of Ocam as a member of the Board of Health. I have enjoyed working with you and with the people of Ocam as instituting practices to streamline responsive support to our residents, modernize and organize information, ease applications and payments after additional local health promotion activities and options like the townwide cleanup and the shops recycling, increase regional supports and oversee the pandemic response to Ocam. My understanding is that the two remaining Board of Health members, along with the Board of Selectmen, can meet to discuss and vote on a replacement member until the next election. I remain willing to assist the Board of Health with any questions that might arise after my departure from elected office.
The second motion.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
And I, I vote to accept the resignation with regret. And I'm very sorry that he has to leave his post on Board of Health, that is his strong suit.
And I just wanna make sure that you saw in the email that he will not be accepted at that one part.
Another good morning, members of the Board of Selectmen. I regret that I will not be able to accept appointment to the Council on Aging either at this time due to an other volunteer commitments that I have already recently accepted. I have enjoyed mostly everything over twelve years of elected and appointed service to Ocam. From Town Tree Warden to Fire Department Advisory Board of Selectmen and nine years on the Board of Health. Going forward, I'll be providing my volunteer time and passion to serve the Boy Scouts of America, preparing for our next jamboree in twenty twenty-five and service on its National Youth Protection and Youth Safety Committees and locally to Treasure Valley and the local scouting councils, Risk Management Committee and its Board of Directors.
Option to accept resignation.
Council on Aging.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. It sounds like he's going to be very, very busy. Thank you.
So the term of expiration on that is, um, on the second anniversary of the date which charter notifies town that the broadband project is complete, so it's an open project. I second the motion.
He swore them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Twenty-six.
Leave you this Lucy, that's her name.
Yes, I wrote it on mine.
Okay, sorry.
Not so, you know.
Well, I didn't see you write it.